Two more cars pulled behind me went off. Okay, it is six thirty. We will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Who's taking minutes tonight?
Leanne. Joyce are enjoying her time in Florida.
I know she is.
All right, Schnelly.
Here.
Fano.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Meyer is absent. Mozzana's absent. Smith back.
Here.
Phil, or I'm sorry, Van Campen.
Here and here.
Perfect. Ann Polda.
Here.
All right, thank you. There are no minutes available for the February meeting at this point, so we'll move on to public appearances. First item we have to repeat every time is that this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the planning commission, including items both on and off the agenda. This agenda item allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions to its presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information commission members may discuss. Information period, comma, commission members may discuss procedural matters related to the information such as whether this information should be directed to a staff or placed in a future agenda. This commission members cannot expand their discussion beyond that protocol. Fifteen minutes, three minutes first. Anybody want to do that? I didn't think you did. We're gonna move on to item. Item five, communication missing. Business, there's none, thank you. Unfinished business, none. New business. Items seven A and seven B have been postponed. Seven A was a public hearing. Seven B was a review and possible recommendation of the village board for a final plan. Move on to item seven C. For discussion only, this is a review of conceptual plans for the new Oregon area senior center on Park Brook Waterman Streets. Applicant is the Village of Oregon.
That was quick, I appreciate that. Good evening. I am Jeff Thine. I'm the Village of Oregon's owners representative for the new Oregon area senior center project. We're gonna show you tonight the concept plan that we've come up with that has a site layout and placement of the building. Make sure that we're on the right track, get your input, and then I see that our civil engineer is not here, so I'll take a stab at some of the zoning variances that would be required. We're gonna do a PUD and would would ask for for some of those type items. Do we have drawings in the packet?
Okay, have you just pull the microphone a little closer, so, just for the recording, we can hear you.
Gotcha. All right. So that's our site. So we're we're bordered by Waterman, Park Street to the south and Brook Street to the north. Existing libraries on the corner, existing senior center is on the site, and then to the north is the existing USPS building. Fairly soon, we're we're currently looking at sometime this summer that we would demo the old library building and the USPS building just to get those things off the site. There's a bunch of utilities to get out of the way and get relocated. And so that, for the most part, that gray area, including those three village street right-of-ways, are kind of what we're looking at for the site. And then the the senior center would remain where it is there in the lower left-hand corner of the site. And so if we scroll to the next plan. The gray area is the the property that the village owns inside of the right-of-way. With with all four of those chunks with the the old library and the USPS. And then we've highlighted the right-of-way for the three streets that border it because in a minute here, we're gonna talk about a Park Street project that we're coordinating with, and then how we might use those right-of-ways to help with our parking problem that we have. So if we can move on to the next slide. Placement of the building was was considered when Try North did an initial analysis, and there's been, you know, this project's been worked on for quite some time. What came out of that analysis is that not only do we have a senior center facility for all those activities, we have a gymnasium fitness center, and then if you look at the kind of the south end of the building, there's a drive-in, drive-out area. On that end of the building, we have adult daycare service, and then there's also a fairly substantial food preparation, food delivery operation that runs out of the senior center building as well. The gymnasium is the chunk of the building up to the north there on that end, so that would be a taller building, and then the rest of the senior center would be a a single-story building. We've got three different access points coming in. There's the one off of Waterman Street that helps us get in and out of that drop-off area and some parking on the east side of the building for adult daycare. And then there's another entrance further down Park Street that gets you in kind of the main parking lot for seniors that are using the senior center facility. And then we've got another entrance coming from the north off of of Brook Street so that there's good flow in and out of the site and for for fire department access and things like that. We've been working on this plan for probably, well, at least six months. Our team consists of OPN architects, JSD professional services, which is our civil engineer. We've been working with village staff. We've been working with village engineering. We've been working with the engineer that supports village engineering, Rukert Milke, myself, Rachel, and then we've also met already with the the fire department and the police department to have them take a look at both the building, access to the building, and other other safety concerns. If you just look at the site itself, it's hard for us to come up with enough area for stormwater management and for parking. Oh, I forgot to mention, we also have a senior center consultant that we're working with, Doug Gallo from Lifespan Studios, who's been helping us with, you know, specific things that are senior-oriented, and part of that is is parking and how we have things laid out and how we get people, you know, in and out of the building. But anyway, we're struggling with having enough room on site for stormwater management and and the parking that we would like to have. A building of this size with the types of uses that we have could potentially want to have two hundred parking stalls, and we we do not have that. We certainly don't have that on-site. If you look at the lower right-hand corner of that slide, it says we have seventy stalls, which are actually within the village zone property that's inside the right-of-way. And so we're relying on a lot of parking around the building that would be in right-of-way. Both on Park Street, Waterman, and then reconfiguring reconfiguring a few stalls up on Brook Street to get our total count up to, I think, a hundred and seventy-nine, if I can read from that far away. And and another idea that came up early on was that, as we're kind of looking for real estate, is should we vacate the Waterman Street right-of-way? So on this plan, you'll see that we are planning on using that space. The piece to the north that has stormwater management and some, you know, landscaping, bio-retention, and a and a walkway to get up to the park to the north, that piece would definitely be vacated. And then the piece to the south where we've got the parking that could potentially remain city right-of-way, and we would just put restrictions on the parking to make sure that the senior center can use what they want there, or potentially vacate that right-of-way, make that part of the senior center property, and then have shared access to the property that's to the east of us. There's a garage there that needs to be able to to get in and out of there. So we're maybe fifty-fifty on whether we need to actually need to vacate that right-of-way, or maybe just leave it right-of-way and put restrictions on it. The Park Street portion, so from that Waterman-Park Street intersection all the way to whatever that street is that I should know the name of. That entire chunk of Park Street is being considered for a total reconstruction anyway. So as soon as we started looking at what we were doing at the senior center, coordinating with Lauren and and the the rest of engineering and village staff, we thought, okay, let's let's think about designing these two things together and see if we can come up with a a good solution. One of the things that we were kind of charged with at the beginning of the project was just also thinking about having enough downtown parking and, you know, where the the end of Park Street isn't too far away from the the corner park there and, you know, the main main downtown area. And so maybe it's a good idea to have shared parking on Park Street that could be overflow for the senior center, but then it's available to anybody that needs parking downtown. So that's where that idea came up. And then, I guess, before, maybe we we ask for some feedback. The latest thinking is that the the project on the senior center site is gonna be in two phases. So if you look at the drawing that's up there right now, that gray area of the parking lot is the the footprint of the existing senior center. So we're able to fence that area off, figure out how to get Rachel access in and out of the senior center and keep that operating. And then everything, you know, to the north and the east would become the construction site for the general contractor that's going to build the the senior center. And so potentially, that senior center project starts in spring of twenty twenty-six and goes through spring of twenty twenty-seven. Then we have to take down the old senior center and put the rest of the parking lot back together, so that's happening from the spring into the summer of twenty twenty-seven, and then eventually everything inside the site is completed. But the Park Street project needs to also be coordinated with that. So when we would go after the first piece of the building for the senior center, the first project for the inside the site, there would be a separate village project under a different contract going after that Waterman-Park Street intersection so that that work could be done and completed, and we could have that entrance ready to go when the senior center is completed. And then, once we get the new, once we get the old senior center down and get everything up and running in the new senior center, then we would go after the rest of the Park Street project because we would be shutting off that second access off of Park Street. But by that time, everything to the north would be functioning and operating, and that Park Street project would would end at the end of twenty twenty-seven. So that's the that's the grand plan. So are there, is there anything I missed before we ask for some questions, comments?
Maybe just kind of the community use that we're envisioning kind of after-hours for the gym, and maybe just point out to the the main entrance and kind of what we're thinking over there.
Sure. Yep. So right where the the hand is up there right now at at the crux of the building is where kind of the main entrance is for people that are gonna come and and use the senior center. Like we talked about before, there's entrances to the south that are more focused on the the meal service and the adult daycare, but the anybody that's coming into the senior center is coming into that location right there. And then we will have a dual vestibules, or we'll have an entrance also that gets you into the the fitness facility from that area. And that, we want it to be set up where, you know, you could use the, you could have people in the senior center after after-hours, and you could secure the gym if you wanted to, or vice versa. We could have after-hours use of the gym with other people in the community. That hasn't really been worked out yet, but we're trying to leave it functional. That was a big thing that came with the feedback when they asked for the community input was that, you know, we we want this fitness facility for the senior center, but also there's a big interest in the community to be able to share use of that. So it's set up that way, that that after-hours or weekends, or I guess whenever the senior center isn't operating, that that could be used by other people.
Anyone just mention the building committee, too, that we have? Not sure if all the planning commissioners know about that.
Yes, and we, our newly formed building committee, we we met with on Tuesday night, so they have seen this as well. So we've had quite a few people, even though it's our concept design, we've we've been working on it for quite some time, and we feel like it's getting to be kind of a final final product, even though we're first coming to you now to get to get some input. But it's been fairly well thought out. It's quite a riddle to get everything placed here and the timing and the phasing and all of that.
Excuse me, just as far as the zonings, this is in the central business, the downtown zoning district. I think in the memo above kind of lists out some of the exceptions that would be requested.
This was this was in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep. So I think the main thing is downtown buildings are typically required to be two or more stories. This would just be a one-story building. The gym is just a higher ceiling.
A taller one-story.
Tall, yeah, but the like walking track around that, we're planning that all be on just one floor, so that would be an exception. Possibly, I think, building height we're okay on, but, you know, parking is also not required to be on-site in downtown, but given the use with the senior center, wanting those spaces to be accessible, that'll be, you know, obviously, parking is a big part of the site, but I think largely it's the the building height there, and that's kind of just driven by the function of the the space, wanting it to be more efficient, easier to staff and manage and keep people safe and kind of be aware of where they are functionally just on one story. So I think that's everything. Rachel, anything else you wanted to mention?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe it's worth notice noting, just the, when we're looking at that white box, the square footage of that is thirty-three thousand five hundred square feet. We haven't quite done all the space planning for the interior of the building, but just to give you a feel for the size of that, it's coincidentally about the same size as the new library. So you can just, you know, get the scale of of what we're looking at there.
Excuse me, the the footprints on the library, it's not thirty-three thousand, is it, or?
Well, the building, the the library is thirty-three thousand, but the footprint's smaller because half of the building is two-story. And here we would be single-story, so it does have a bigger footprint.
Larger footprint, yeah.
I'm gonna just hand it over for feedback now.
Yeah. Anybody have anything to say about it?
I would just ask one question that. Where's the meal delivery? What is that? Is that planned yet? Where are you putting that, in the parking lot, in the drive-thru for a meal delivery?
Yes. So if you look at that south end of the building, there's kind of a drive-in, drive-through area. And at the center of that would be the the main function in and out of the the kitchen area and the meal prep area. So people would be coming in there, getting out of the traffic lane, keep, trying to keep that activity away from the the seniors parking, trying to walk into the building, so we wanted to separate that out. And then, the parking that's on Waterman Street that actually faces the fronts of the building, that that's also, that that would be, there's volunteers that come and stop and are in and out, and then adult daycare. People are dropping off, so that part to the south and to the southeast is for those functions, and then we're trying to keep the the seniors using the building up in the bigger parking lot. And those those pink arrows that you see there, there's wide walking paths that are between the parking. So people can get out of the car, they can quickly get to a safe walking path, and then follow those arrows to get up onto the sidewalk and get to the front door, and trying to not have them crossing a bunch of traffic.
Thank you.
What are the sizes of the parking spaces? Are they of narrower style that that we see in some parking lots, or are they so that older people can get in and out without tearing things up?
Right. Part of having Doug Gallo onboard, our consultant, you know, he's he's looking at the site as well, and he helped us with this, you know, the the flow of people walking in. We we don't have curbs, you know, so we can kind of keep everything at at the same level. And then those parking stalls that are within the site are larger than normal for that purpose. Anything that we're planning on doing around it in the right-of-way would be the normal, you know, width for the stalls. But the ones inside the parking lot on the site are larger.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just from my understanding, why is there a teaching kitchen?
A what?
A teaching kitchen and accompanying classroom in this building?
I can take that one, Jeff. So the classroom is a classroom. There are a lot of classes that are offered at the senior center, you know, falls prevention classes and just a whole host of classes. We also find that seniors often request help dealing with cooking for one or two people because they're not necessarily used to that. They also appreciate classes in things like how to use an air fryer, how to use an Instant Pot, how to take, how to most efficiently use the food in your refrigerator to make those soups that we're all told we should be able to take everything out of our refrigerator and use to create delicacies. So a teaching kitchen, it's really just off to the side of a classroom that will get used as a classroom most of the time, but it allows for an opportunity to do some additional kinds of programming that people would like and have requested. And it gives us the kinds of amenities in a classroom we need anyway, like sink, counters, because we do end up using our classrooms for serving snacks during classes and things.
So you're not talking a cooking classroom like six burner stoves, overhead hoods, and that kind of stuff? We're talking about simple stuff.
Right, but not to be confused with the fairly substantial commercial kitchen for the meal preparation, which is kind of its own operation. Yes.
The second question I've got is, when I asked this of the consultants, when we were doing the conceptual sort of stuff, I got a, my opinion, really poor answer as to why in a site where we're trying to get a lot of stuff into it, we're doing a one-story building. Can you give me an answer as to, on a site that we are trying to fit so many things into, instead of going up, we're going out? And just so you know, the excuse that was, and it's truly an excuse that was given to us when the consultant came through last time, was that is the direction that clinics are going these days. That doesn't make it right, and if you've been through some of these one-story clinics, they're awful. So why are we going with one story?
All right.
I'm, I will offer my input on that first. When you're serving a population that is not very mobile, and that a significant percentage use walkers or other assistive devices, trying to evacuate a two-story building is very difficult when you don't have an elevator that you can use. Also, it's very difficult if the power is out. It's very difficult if your elevator is not working. Typically, buildings that serve older adults are safer on one, one floor. And having worked, I worked for eighteen years in a three-story facility that served older adults. Trying to take people down staircases and things that look like inflatable life rafts is not much fun for the staff and also pretty frightening for the people who are on those. So my, and I've had conversations with the fire chief, who has basically just said to me, you need, you need to build a one-story building. A senior center should be a one-story building.
It's also a staffing consideration.
It is also a staffing consideration. It takes more people to monitor more floors.
So there are, there are things put in place to protect people in a building like this so that they don't necessarily have to get down the steps or a ramp or whatever. So again, I I still just really struggle to wrap my head around a site where we're trying to fit a lot of things in, one-story building. I'll just lay it there. The only other thing is, I think that there is under no circumstance that we should allow on any document to have parking stalls that are not on the property. We would not allow that of a private developer. We would not allow that of any other project, and we haven't allowed that on any other project. I don't think that you should have it on cover letters. I don't think that you should have it as a count on a site plan. That site needs to stand as its own, or you need to ask for a change to, you need to ask for the flexibility. So that's, we, it's it's off the property. You can't guarantee those stalls. You can't. There could be something going on across the street where fifty of those stalls are being used. There may be a swim meet going on. There may be something at the school. There may be anything. They're not yours. They're not on your site. You can't use them in your counts.
And again, the unique circumstance here is because it's downtown zoning.
Then just count the ones on the site.
Right, but there's no off-street parking requirement downtown, so anything we do is above and beyond what's required.
Perfect. So then just use the ones that are on your site.
In your count.
In your account.
And ask for for some kind of a leeway.
Well, there's, there's no leeway needed. The 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 requirement says you can have zero parking spaces. So if you feel that you need parking spaces for your site, you accommodate that on your site. I think part of the reason we wanted to show the adjacent parking is partially that kind of downtown event crossover use, that that was one thing we kind of talked about is knowing that there's gonna be a big surface lot here, adjacent, on-street parking. You know, how, just getting our arms around, how many spaces could we actually fit in here? I'm sure the majority of the folks using the senior center, they're gonna prefer to use the spaces that are closest. But just trying to get sensitive, again, if we did some of these adjustments, how many spaces can we really get around here? They're not gonna be restricted, but also the senior center site, you know, those parking spaces aren't gonna say for senior center use only because we're a public entity, right? It's gonna be public parking, so if people want to park there and walk to the pool.
Is your contention then that you prefer not to have?
Let me, let me add a little bit of information so we can get to the bottom of this. So the stalls on Park Street, we can, we're, we can take off of our plan. The reason that they're there is we were trying to show the coordination between our project and the Park Street project, but that'll become a different project. So the next time you see a plan, we won't. That's not our domain, so we'll take those off. We're not, we're not, we're not trying to stretch to meet a requirement for parking, but the Waterman Street right-of-way, that parking is going to be constructed as part of the senior center project and out of the senior center funds. And whether we leave it right-of-way or whether we actually absorb that property into village senior center property, those stalls are definitely gonna be part of the project. And then if we do do rework on those few stalls on Park Street or on Brook Street to the north, those are also gonna be part of the senior center project. So we are, the senior center project is doing some work on the adjacent right-of-way as part of the project. So those, those we'll have on our plan, and 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 we're not putting them there to try to find a way to meet a requirement. We're just trying to show that that work is gonna be part of our project.
The argument, Jeff, is the Park Street, I get it, totally understand. Waterman, that's easy if you're gonna absorb it, cross-access agreement, done.
Yep.
The project, the stuff on the north side, developers have to go into the street to do sewer water improvements as per a city or village requirement.
Right.
All the time.
Yep.
Doesn't make them yours.
Yeah, no, no, understood, understood.
You're talking about funding, where the funding's coming from for reconstructions.
No, I don't, I don't care.
He's just talking about we can't rely on them because they're not ours.
So again, I think that you just show what's on your property. I know that there's no requirement. Just handle what's in your property.
Is it necessary for them to show, for instance, the work on Brook Street? If it's part of the funding? In other words, you come back before plan commission with your GDP and all that type of stuff?
My opinion is, is when we come back with our plan to plan commission, it won't show anything for Park Street because that's a separate project.
Park, yes.
But for our project on our project plans, we're going to show the Waterman Street.
Yes.
All of that construction, and we're going to show the rework on Brook Street as, you know, the village is requiring us in our developer agreement to rework those parking stalls as part of our project. So we're going to show that work.
Okay.
But I think John's point is good, and it's good for Rachel and for us to consider is that, at the end of the day, if all those stalls in the city right-of-way are full, we only have seventy stalls on our site, and can we function?
Yeah, yeah.
Just with what's in the site.
Right, and I get it. I, I have no doubt that ninety percent of those stalls are probably going to be available ninety percent of the time.
Yeah.
The, the issue is, are you comfortable with what you've got on your site to handle what you're doing with the building?
If they're not available.
Most of the time.
Right.
And again, it's that, it, it's sort of like a parking lot at a mall. It's, you know, you're parking for the hundred-year event.
Christmas.
Yeah, Christmas. So, so, are, are you going to handle all the parking all the time? No, but we're going to handle ninety percent of the issues ninety percent of the time. Okay.
All right, anything else?
I don't see, well, obviously I've seen the plan, so I have no problem with it at this point. But John's comments are, are certainly valid.
Sure.
How about you fellows, anything? Phil, nothing? Larry?
And for next steps, we're going to, with our building committee, we're going to start working on a visioning session for exterior materials. So we'll come back as soon as we can to start showing you, you know, exterior elevations and what we're planning on for design and, and all of that stuff that you guys want to see. So we'll be back soon for that.
Perfect, thank you.
But as far as the site layout and all that, it's Tetris, you know?
Yeah.
Whatever. Just make sure that, and it, it works. There's, cross-access is good, traffic flow is good.
Something said the construction starts late winter twenty-six and wraps up early spring twenty-seven. Is that a, is one of those dates wrong, the number?
No, and it, and we're not starting it when we'd like to start it. I'd like to start it, you know, in May and be done in June so we can actually do landscaping. But we're going to start probably in February of twenty-six and deliver the first piece in February twenty-six and the second, or February twenty-seven, and then be able to finish up the parking lot into the, further into twenty-seven.
And you'll finish your landscaping, et cetera, obviously, in the summer of twenty-seven.
And twenty-seven, so she's, she'll be moving in without landscaping.
Right.
But that's what we've got to do to get that old senior center down.
And that's, yeah, that's okay. Right?
But in twenty-twenty-eight, it'll be beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, you bet. Next item is item seven D Delta for discussion only. Review and conceptual plans for a new building, two oh one Market Street. For the applicant is the Oregon Straw Hat Players.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Want me to just jump in?
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Emily Richardson. I'm the current president of the Board of Directors of the Oregon Straw Hat Players. We've been in this community for over forty years, been putting on shows and musicals, plays for all different ages for many, many years. And the building that we are currently located in as our headquarters is not, not meeting our needs anymore as far as from a practical standpoint, nor for the image that we would like to project to the community. So this is a picture of our home right now. This is two oh one Market Street. In the early days, Oregon Straw Hat Players relied on the generosity of its own members to store props and costumes and everything else. And we snuggled into this building fifteen, twenty years ago and have been using it for storage. We have our costumes. We have a, a little bit of a second floor that we use for props. We have lots of tools. We have lumber, all kinds of things, all in that one space. So it's been a dream of ours to replace that building or move somewhere else for many years. And it seems like if we could use that space that we already have, since we own two lots, that would be the most practical and financially feasible option for us. There's a picture of the, there's a picture in your packet there of what our proposed building looks like. Cleary has helped us come up with this design. So that larger side of the building sits exactly where our building is now. And then we would be adding that office on the left side. That's the south side of our building. So the main issue is that we are already not in compliance with setbacks. But we're not asking for anything different. We're just asking to use the space that we already have with the addition of the office. As you can see, we wouldn't even be dipping into our extra lot. So not only are we going to have more space, but we're really, this would be a great opportunity to improve the look of Market Street. Also, when you're going down Main Street and you look down Grove, this is the first building you see. So we'd love to have something that actually reflects the quality of our organization. I think often, as a president, I have to look at sort of the big picture. And one of those things is, when people move to this community, we want to attract them to our organization. And if they were to Google Map our address, I don't think they'd be too impressed to be, compared to Verona, Stoughton, McFarland, you know, the other.
We're not in competition, no?
Oh, not at all. But we want all the good performers to come to Oregon, so. So I guess I'm looking for questions and input from you to see what direction we need to go.
So just to clarify too, they are talking about doing a full takedown of the existing building and then a rebuild, but the larger, taller section would be basically sitting on the same footprint of the existing metal building? And then it would have that addition of the, the kind of office?
We'll have to do a site approval probably, is that right or not? We'll have to do a site approval?
Yeah, it would be because of the front yard setback. Basically, the building's right on the property line. It'd have to be planned development, really just for that front yard setback exception.
All right, all right.
But they do own a lot, as she mentioned, that goes all the way down to the creek. But just because of shoreline zoning, you need to be at least seventy-five feet away from that. And obviously, this is more accessible from the front. But could you also maybe talk a little bit about just expected use? Like, how many people would be here one time? Kind of how often would there be folks coming in and out?
Right, so we would not be using this for rehearsals, performances, anything like that. Currently, our board meets there once a month. That's nine people with sometimes some extra visitors. And then we usually have one to two cleanups per year where we have as many members who can come just help us clear out stuff, reorganize. And then usually, at the end of every show, we have quite a bit of activity. So I would say, at the most, there'd be ten to twenty people there unloading trucks, putting our props back, that kind of thing for three to four hours. And I believe we're required to have a minimum of three parking spots. So if there's room, maybe along the side of the office? So does that need to be paved?
Yep, either paved or like a compacted gravel, but.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with it.
Okay.
And I think we can work with you on that, since you've been such a great part of the community for such a long time. So that's my opinion.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I think I'd have to agree with what you're saying. Straw Hat Players been, been a very vital part of our community for many years, forty-four, forty-five, as you say, and that, working, working it out to make it work best for you and maybe for future development of that corner in the Grove Street and curb and gutter, maybe, and something that will need to be looked at. The drainage right now is, is all surface drainage. It doesn't go into, it just goes to the creek, I think, of the street there. So that's all things that should be, be worked out.
Yep, yep, we can work with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of things. One, I think that we need, there's, a few years ago, there was a development further to, I'm going to say the north, that came through. And we asked them to do some things. And I just want to say, I think we should be consistent with the expectations between the developments. I think we had them put like an awning over the top. And we didn't specify what that needed to be. It could be the metal that you've got. I don't, it could be a fabric awning. It could be something like that. I don't remember all of the sort of requirements that we asked them, but you know, you know the one I'm talking about?
Yeah, it was near the Farm Center property. It was a little bit further north, but it was a guy who was doing a, he's got a two-story building, and it was an addition of a one-story building. But trying to make it look, I think, a little bit more appealing. Yeah, that was, that was a couple of years ago. I could pull up the plans and see what we, I think they even had like a soldier course or some kind of stripe on top to just have a bee.
Office portion, just put a piece of metal across underneath the window to change the color or something, to add a little, you know, something. I just think that we just need to be consistent, that's all. The, you're under fifty thousand cubic feet, but you might want to find out, because it's an occupied building from Cleary, if you can put a building right on the lot line without it being fire-rated. I know that you don't, you're, you don't have any openings, so that's not, this is just an FYI.
Okay.
So, I, we, that's outside of our preview. I, I do this for a living, so I'm just offering it to you as a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
But I think, getting back into the plan commission side, we do have an expectation for at least a handicap stall, and I think one additional stall, probably.
Yeah, it's based on the square footage here. It's either two or three spaces that would be required for kind of a storage-type use.
I don't think we'd ask for more than that because of whatever, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is for discussion only again. Review of the proposed changes to accessory poultry keeping and related language for the upcoming zoning text amendments.
I know you guys are really excited to see this one again, so.
I've learned so much in this, it's.
I have learned a lot, yes. So I think we last talked about this in December. We had a couple of members of the public that had been really involved in some of our community conversations attending, and I know we had some kind of back and forth discussion with them for some of the proposed language. Since then, I was working with Van de Waal, trying to, kind of wrap that up and get it ready for an ordinance. Had another one of the community members reach out with some questions and suggestions. I think some of them were good, kind of more formatting clarifications and realizing that maybe what we were intending and what we had written down were conflicting each other. So I think she brought up some good points. Other questions she had, I think, are again more policy-related. So just want to get, I'll, I'll go through kind of some suggested language and some emails between Van de Waal and myself. But just some, I guess, clarification from you all as to how far in the weeds you want to get or not, and direction on, you know, if we want to kind of entertain some of these suggestions or just kind of stick with what we've had. So, let me scroll to that. Okay, so a couple of the changes, and then we can kind of get into the wording. But the one suggestion was rather than accessory chicken keeping, just poultry keeping, because now we've got, I think, quail, ducks, and chickens on there. So I think that's probably, you know, a good overarching term. There was some language about, just in general, we've talked about grandfathering, these kind of non-conforming uses right now. There was some language about, in the last version, if folks that have ducks, that that should be implement, you know, kind of effective later. And basically, we just said, you know, I think either everything should be effective as soon as it's adopted, or we pick a date and say, for all uses, no matter how many animals you have, no matter what kind they are, this is going to be effective. And we just kind of pulled that number, the January first twenty-six number out of a hat. It could, you know, it could be next spring or summer, or we just say, as soon as this is adopted, this is effective. And if you're in violation of that, you know, you need to work towards kind of bringing down your numbers and maybe not replacing birds when, you know, your numbers start to diminish or something like that. So we added just some clarifying language on coop and run building standards. Chicken feed storage, basically, sometimes birds are fed outside in open feeders that would not be, you know, animal resistant, but I think the purpose was that the storage of the feed, you know, overnight storage, that kind of thing would be kept inside or in a secured container. We would not have a separate poultry keeping permit. It would just be that state registration. And then we also have a list, it's kind of, I don't know if any of you were around when, it was before my time, but Matt Dragney, our former village attorney, did a whole kind of exotic animal probit, prohibited list, and roosters and gamecocks were added there. So there's a separate, that's in a different section of our whole code. It's not even in the zoning code. But basically, just trying to match up the rooster language. We're allowing them, propose to allow them here for breeding and show purposes, so making sure that those two sections don't conflict themselves. And then gamecocks are birds that are bred specifically for fighting, so just reiterating that that would be an animal that we still want to not allow. The other thing that this property owner brought up, which I thought was a good point, is, so we talked last time about having, I think, ten birds allowed that were sort of adult. I think most people can, doing more of the laying hens for eggs than other types of birds or other types of uses. But we know that people often get chicks. They're not sex, so they don't necessarily know if they're going to be male or female. They also don't necessarily all make it. We also talked about meat birds. They grow quicker, and usually they're harvested at a younger age. But she kind of brought up the point that folks could have a large number of meat birds. Say they harvest them at twelve weeks old. They could have fifty meat birds and still kind of be under that age requirement, which I don't think is what we were going for. I think we were going for, you have little chicks, you get fifteen, maybe eight of them make it. They're actually girls, and you want to keep them, and then the, you know, boys get taken out to the country or whatever happens to the roosters. But just wanting to make sure that, yeah, we don't have a limited number of mature meat birds, which could have, basically, somebody could have ten laying hens and twenty meat birds, but they're only eleven weeks old, and so they don't count towards that total. So hopefully that makes sense. So this is the changes we've made. This is obviously not in like an ordinance format, but this is kind of potentially what this could look like for moving forward kind of in the code. So I'm not sure if you all have had time to read this. There haven't been a ton of changes. Again, a lot of it was just making sure sections didn't conflict with each other. But I think the, the big feedback I wanted to get as far as the, that number of birds, the age limit, any other, I guess, policy issues that you felt like, you know, are we at a good spot to bring this to, to a public hearing or, or not?
Personally, I think we are. I don't know what you fellows think. I think we're at that spot. We've, we've, we've talked about it enough. Our, you know, consultants, everybody else has done a good job. We've had the public come back and, and make suggestions, and it's all been incorporated into something we think is pretty close. So, yes, yes, Bill. I'm sorry, glad Larry.
I was pointing out you.
Oh, he was, Larry, go ahead.
I'm sure Greg saw you.
Yeah, I, I agree with you that we're ready, just about ready to go. But we've, we've had a real good work by the village staff to get this worked out. It's turned out to be more of an interest in it than anybody ever thought it would be, but that's kind of where backyard poultry is right now. It's very popular, and you have to watch your, getting people in the gamecock business and things that most of us in degree are right. But I would like to point out, and I've been looking not only at the nuisance problem. But I would like to point out, and I've been looking not only at the nuisance problem of ducks and, and geese, but also the, dealing with the avian flu virus, which everybody knows is, is around, and it's just, it's, keeps barrowing up a little bit more every week as to what it's, how it's getting transmitted, if it's getting into people. And so far, it's been very well managed, as managed as well as it can be, and people quarantines in the right places and things being done. I wouldn't want to be making, at this point in time, I wouldn't want to get too liberal on, on that, because we don't know where it's going. At the same time, it may not be a big problem, but we used to have a sunny side hatchery here that was in the village limits. It was a growing or going business, a very busy, and we don't want to enhance or not discourage agricultural things to come to our community if there's a space, the right space for it. I would feel that when we, if we're limiting ducks, we need to limit geese and swans. There are tree animal or birds that are pretty much the same in terms of how they live and act, and some are more aggressive, or dirtier, more of a nuisance problem. But the swans and geese and ducks are the most likely carrier of avian flu virus, because they're bottom feeders and they sift through the bottom of what's going on in the waters they're in. And then the closed community, well, you don't know where that coming from. We've got geese migrating by us twice a year, and then some that stay around. And I just feel that if we're going to limit ducks, and I'm not opposed to putting a, having ducks and putting a tight limit on them, but I think that all three species should be, should be named in that. Quail are not a problem. No, they're wild, wild bird, it's pretty clean, they're small, very micro, they're Because they don't take much space, and they don't, they don't, they don't call out very much, and they're crowing.
I just, for some reason, have this silly part in me. So this, we've put so much time to this. Can we publish this instead of telling municipalities it's a guide for them?
I'm sure, well, there's, there's definitely a planner, zoner, listserv, hive mind. We share questions and stuff all the time. I actually reached out to that group when we first started all of this and said, okay, this is kind of, you know, blown up, we have all this interest, you know, what direction have people gone? I think this is, if we pass something that looks similar to this, we're definitely going to have the highest number that's permitted. But I think also kind of, I'm of the mind that let's try something and see how it works. If it becomes a problem, then we can always amend it.
And we're the forerunners in it.
That's right, yeah. Larry, just to your point, I just wanted to show you that, so geese, swans, peacocks, and other species not mentioned are prohibited in this section. Right now, we have chickens and quail allowed, and then ducks permitted on properties with the minimum lot size of fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, which I think is our larger, you know, sort of our larger single-family zoning districts. So I guess the other feedback I wanted to get from you all is, how do you think we should handle the grandfathering? Should we have a date in here that says, okay, everybody, here's your heads up? You know, maybe we're going to adopt this in April, but is it effective right away? Or do we want to have a date listed in here so that, you know, either people are going to start their operation and, and do what they want to do beforehand? Or if you are already existing, you just need to kind of work towards compliance, you know, as, as quickly as you're able to?
My, my comment to that would be that I don't think we need to wait until the first of January of twenty-six. However, we should give them some time and, and maybe sometime, well, how long is it going to take for us to get this in ordinance form, you know?
So we could probably, you know, we could have this as soon as the April third Planning Commission meeting.
And then still ask before Village Board?
They should go to Village Board, so that'd be late April by the time it's adopted.
July first, September first, what do you guys think? I, I don't know. I, I think, let's not wait until the end of the year. Bye, bye. You know, we'll have an ordinance in place. Of course, people are coming in. If they have any questions, we'll have the ordinance. But we still have to end the ordinance, we got to pick that date, so.
Not being a chicken-raising guy, question Larry or anybody else that might know, when you're raising chickens, do you do that throughout the winter?
Sure.
You know, do you breed them and everything else? I, I get the spring, but like January to December, when it's cold, do you continue? Or is that sort of a slow time? My point is, is would that be a more logical time to give them as they change over to the new system? Rather than trying to do it in the spring, rather than trying to do it in the middle of the summer when everybody's active, is there a slow time?
I think the, the concentrated time for the people that are having poultry in our community or they want them, they're, they're getting things revving up right now to be getting eggs hatched, and the kids are getting them ready for county's fair and the state fair. And I would think we gave, we, we gave them a, at least one full cycle that they can get, they can work that in and probably have it closed down by the end of this year, and that's it.
So you're pointing more towards the first of the year? Which, which now, after listening to what you had to say, makes, makes more sense to me that, because I didn't have any, you know? I just saw some chicks today.
Yeah, yeah, I think that what I've tried to communicate with people that have been concerned about this, too, is that not going to be the chicken police or the chicken census taker, you know, with too much to do and it's only so many of us. So it's more when there are concerns from neighbors, and there's some egregious kind of over, you know, population or something like that going on. The animals aren't being taken care of, they're causing nuisance for the neighbors. That's when we can turn to this and say, you're clearly out of compliance, but I'm not going to be there counting the number of chicks. And I don't know how to age a chick, you know, decide if it's a boy or a girl or anything like that, especially when they're little. So I think we've also changed this to eight weeks of age, because I don't think, I forgot with the meat birds, and I know Rachel has some experience with this, too, but how, how old the meat birds typically are when they're harvested, I think it's...
Depends on whether you want them as Cornish hen size or you want them as roski size. So Cornish hen size, you can easily do an eight to ten-week-old bird, and you've got something worth.
Yeah, I don't feel like there's too many people doing meat chickens within the village. I mean, from what we heard.
Not within the village. I think a lot of it, this is just what I witnessed going around the village. I, you know, I don't see a lot of them. I imagine there's more than I realize. I think the idea is probably mostly for eggs. Because, you know, any of those people that know the process of butchering chickens is...
Yep, and then, yeah, we have roosters are prohibited unless they can provide documentation that it's for either a show purpose or an academic, like a breeding project or something like that. So again, still have a noise ordinance, we still have the nuisance ordinance. If it becomes a problem, you know, we can inquire, what's, what's this rooster's purpose on earth and go from there. Yeah, so if you guys are generally fine with everything, we'll move forward with getting this into ordinance format and then try to get this on hopefully the April or May Planning Commission for a public hearing.
This is formatted so that it doesn't affect the institutions of education or high school or for good laboratories.
So we do have here institutional land uses. So high school, you know, if a church had, you know, community garden and they had something like that, they would, they'd be subject to the, all the standards above, except that they could have twenty adult birds instead of ten. Like I've heard, heard from the high school, they're probably, the high school administration is probably a lot more picky about what's going on with the birds in the classroom than I would ever be aware of. And so I think if it's getting out of control at the school, the school's going to be communicating with the teacher and making sure that that's getting taken care of. But they'd still have to keep, you know, feed in an enclosed container and that kind of thing. I mean, any roosters they have are going to be for educational purposes. So I think they're going to be fine with the other uses. And again, if there's a unique circumstance that comes up, we'll address it when it comes. But yeah, I'm sure, like you all, ready to just get it adopted and...
I think so. We've put it, and I, I'm glad we put this much time into it.
Education, yeah, so then we can kind of get the word out over the next couple of months, and then people can prepare for the twenty-six season as they order their...
Thanks, okay, great. Item seven F, review and possible recommendation to Village Board for extraterritorial jurisdiction. Certified survey map, one, one zero six zero Glenway Road, Town of Oregon. Tim and Diane Hack. Well, this is, it's, you haven't seen any problems. It's outside quite a ways, but still within the ter, extraterritorial?
It's actually right across from the Bergermont, kind of kitty corner from the tennis courts at the Legend of Bergermont. So tennis courts are sort of over here, pools a little bit further to the east. I wish I had included a larger map, but this is a property, they still have one split that they're allowed to do, but it's a forty-acre parcel. They live off of Glenway, but the property is kind of right there, the corner of Glenway and Lincoln. This is the far northeastern corner of their property, so they have the ability per the county, like farmland preservation, they have one more split to divide out two acres for kind of a new house. I think they want to, you know, downsize and build a house that's more accessible. But yeah, we have no concerns. They'll have land here for the future right away, if and when we do a Lincoln Road reconstruction project and do an urban section over there.
So do we just may have a statement of no?
We actually make a motion recommend to Village Board not to object, not to oppose or object to the certified survey.
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion. We have a second?
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Closed, motion carries. That one's taken care of, thank you. I buried my agenda in here somewhere. I'll get it. You don't have any more public appearances than they know of in business, than they know of. Okay, we'll move on then to the status of development projects. Laura, do you have anything? You guys, I think, it's a little early, but...
There's stuff going on.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, you've got, yeah, there's a lot of houses being built by me, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so probably the most notable private development project coming up is we're working with FGG and their engineer for Highlands of Netherwood Phase Five. That should be coming this year. Coincidentally and fortuitously, we're also working on the Well Six project, so those will be built in tandem, which will actually work out quite nicely. More on the public side, we are moving ahead with the Well Three project as well, so you'll start to see activity on those in the next month or so. We did award the contract for the North Oak Street reconstruction, so that runs from East Lincoln Street all the way down past J.C. Park down to Park Street. So it's going to be a significant project. That will also likely be starting as soon as weather permits, because they have a very tight schedule on that due to the proximity to the school. Wastewater Treatment Plant Project will be starting later this spring, most likely. And on the design side, we have two big projects going on, so County Highway MM. We've awarded that to JT Engineering, and they're getting going on the survey part of that, working towards getting at least sixty percent design done by the end of May. We also awarded the Alpine and CC intersection reconstruction project, which will actually extend out about six hundred feet each direction past that intersection. That'll also be a twenty twenty-six construction project, and it's on roughly the same timeline due to the county involvement as the County Highway MM project. So we're also looking at about sixty percent design completed by the end of May. So some pretty quick burn projects going on.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Upcoming meetings, April third and May first. Anything else? Be a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Closed, motion carries, we adjourn. Thanks, everybody. Good one.
Roll over. Chance High Five. All right.
When you adopt a shelter pet, you discover all...